And pray that he'll make a huge difference in Washington, Lord. And just bless each family that you're representing here and give them a safe trip home. Thank you for all the many miracles that you've given to all of us. Thank you very much. Give us peace, give us joy, and give us love for each other. Amen.
Amen.
Please remember your heads here, please. Join me in the pledging to the greatest nation in the world. Please take this to the flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now to the greatest state in the Union.
Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, sir.
There's a couple of Texas flags in the House of Representatives. I'm trying to work on that. I can't tell you how humbling it's been here. This is my first official town hall since I was elected in November. Extremely humbling experience considering that for you, all you in the audience don't know this, I went to junior high right there in C.C. Arty. And I actually ran into my guidance counselor by the way. I got some buddies in other schools. Is Ms. Hansley in here? I ran into her a couple of months ago and she's like, "I always knew you were gonna make something of yourself." I looked at her in the face and I was like, "Well, that's not what you told me in seventh grade." And then graduated high school right there, which is now Texas junior high, if I'm correct. So, again, being the first representative in the House of Representatives graduated from Willis, truly an honor, very humbling. So, thank you for believing in me, thank you for electing me. And I'd like to thank all the veterans in here, first responders, firefighters, and teachers. Here and here in my heart, I always will be. And I want to thank the spouses of all those individuals as well. Without you, we would not, we most certainly wouldn't be where we are today. My lovely bride is here with me today, Leslie. Wherever you are loved, take care. The current House footprints since the election in November. Republicans are in the majority. We have 222 members in the Republican Party, 213 on the Democratic side, okay? And the reason that I need you to know this is I moved through my briefing today. I'm gonna talk about 15 to 20 minutes and I'm gonna open up questions. But I want everybody to realize that even though we have the majority in the House of Representatives, we do not own the Senate and we do not own the White House. Our job in the Republican Party as of right now is to apply pressure. To apply pressure to the Senate, to the White House, for our way of life. Last year, the Democrats passed an omnibus bill, $1.7 trillion. They passed that budget out of the House. The only control as the majority in the lower chamber of the House of Representatives is the purse, the power to wield the money. And we do not have that power until October 1st of this year, okay? I want everybody to understand that. Because you wait, you're gonna be frustrated through this year as we move forward. And you're gonna say, "Why isn't the Republican Party stopping some of this, what we're seeing and what we're hearing?" It is because of the omnibus bill that the President signed into law last year, '22. We are kind of in a stranglehold. But October 1st, that changes. And then you'll see us start to steer the ship back away from the cliff, okay? Does everybody have these handouts in their hand? Break them up for me, please. As we showed up January 3rd, and we elected leadership, and we started moving forward, there were certain bills that the leadership had teed up for us that we activated on immediately. First and foremost, we promised and promised during our campaign season that we would get rid of 87,000 IRS agents. And we did that. We passed that bill out of the House of Representatives unanimously on our side, okay? To stop the funding of 87,000 IRS agents. Just remember, we don't control the Senate and omnibus bill already passed. So, the only thing that we can do is maintain until October 1st when we can start to pull that out, okay? But we passed that out of the House of Representatives on our side. We stood up a subcommittee on China. We also stood up a subcommittee on the DOJ and the criminalization of that department. No more Department of Justice coming after the American people. We voted two pro-life bills out. One that says that you are not allowed, no individual is allowed to attack a pro-life institution in any way, shape, or form. And the second of which was the Survivors Act. That if a child survives an abortion, they are to be provided medical care. And this would kept me awake at night. And shamefully, only one Democrat voted for that bill. And he happened to be a Texan, which I was thrilled at the fact of that. But we passed that one out as well. Condemning socialism. I still can't get my head around why we had to vote for something like that in the House of Representatives to not have socialism in our country. But we did, and we voted that one out. Protecting our energy resources. The Biden administration has continually depleted our strategic reserve. The Republican Party is steadily trying to prevent that from happening. Given the dynamics of the global effort right now, i.e. the war in Ukraine with Russia, what China's doing, Ukraine, North Korea. We want to make sure that we don't deplete our assets in a way that we cannot sustain ourselves. And right now, the way that the strategic reserve is looking, we're going that direction. And we're trying to put the brakes on that in the Republican Party. Enabling public health and demand accountability. And this was another one that really got me. Disapproving the action, District of Columbia tried to pass a law that says anyone, illegal or not, in the District of Columbia could vote in elections. That includes Chinese, people, individuals from China that work in the Chinese economy could vote. Anybody, if you were in the District of Columbia, legal or not, any country, you can vote in DC elections. The DC mayor even disapproved of that, and they still bet. So, we passed the law, we passed the regulation out, stayed in pain. We're not gonna deal with that. Not in America. Okay, so those are high-level, those are some of the high-level bills we passed out. And if you have any questions on that, as soon as I get done with my next little brief, I'll answer that. So, Congressman Brady, he was the chairman of Ways and Means. He said in the Ways and Means Committee, the majority of time that he was our representative here in District Dade, okay? Ways and Means touches every single aspect of almost human existence. It's healthcare, it's social, it's tax, it's really everything. I'm not on Ways and Means, okay? We landed on District Dade now represents the House Armed Services Committee. And we are on the Subcommittee for Cyber and a Subcommittee for Special Operations and Intelligence. We are on the Homeland Security Committee. The Subcommittee for Homeland are Border and Cyber. I'm actually the vice chairman for the Border Subcommittee, which is amazing. We fought for that with UNG. And I'm also on the Veterans Affairs Committee. I'm almost positive, you have to meet with a steering committee in Washington, DC, and in the House of Representatives, it was called a steering committee. And you have to interview with them, so they'll place you in certain committees. I gave them my resume. And from what I understand, after meeting with most of them, I was the only one that fought to get on the DA. And not only did we land on the Veterans Affairs Committee, I'm also the chairman of the Subcommittee for Disability Assistance. And that weighs huge on your problem that you and I have talked about multiple times. And I cannot wait to go to work on that. And I'm also on the Health Subcommittee for Veterans Affairs. So, three committees. I promised you when I was campaigning that I would go to work. I wasn't going to DC. I wasn't leaving my family behind to go up there and be a show horse. I promised you I was gonna go up there and be a workhorse. Three committees, six subcommittees, sunup to sundown, 7:00 to 2:30 in the morning is what I'll do up there, preaching to everyone of you, and I just want you to hear that from me. There are a lot of issues bubbling up internationally and globally right now. And I would love to be able to cover all of them. I'm not gonna do that because I want to hear from you and your needs, concerns, your complaints against me. If I'm not doing something right, I need to hear from you. And I want, I'm asking you this right now. I'm gonna do my best to answer every single question out here. I will never deflect. I will give you my truthful, heartfelt, Will's Law cat answer. It breaks my heart. And I'm still, I don't think I'll ever use this because I never, I don't consider myself a politician. I consider myself a country boy from Willis, but I'm a congressman, so everyone automatically looks at me differently. It kind of breaks my heart. And I will always do my best to show you I've still got blood on my boots, okay? So, with that, I want to turn it over to the audience and answer questions. Yes, ma'am. Right out of the chute.
Okay, I'm a veteran. Are you a veteran?
Ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service.
First off, I'd like to say, are you sure I'm right with you? My dad was in the helicopter crash as well, so I understand. That's why I became an aviation technician, because of that. But some of the issues that have not been addressed is PACT Act. It does not cover reservists whatsoever. And these guys are dying out there too. And then I'd also, Congress.
Keep going, come on, right down.
Okay, Congress has not even responded to you outside of Camp Lejeune. Many, even thousands of dead babies from Camp Lejeune were poisoning. The G-RAT scandal is another big issue. The government has left for this recruiting program and then punished enlisted members for carrying it out. These service members have charges without due process. Also, the patient record flag system within veteran care, Michael E. Davy, does not follow the patient record flag meeting, which clearly states that the use of law enforcement is strictly prohibited. I have a copy of that right here. Also, I was arrested in Congo for a red flag haul. I have a FOIA report right here. I know there's a FOIA in the room. It's right here if you want to see it. Michael E. Davy is supposed to have a disruptive behavioral committee. And there is a manual for it, but the letter I have from Ted Cruz's office shows that they have an Iraq committee that's not supposed to exist. I also have a FOIA report from Michael E. Davy from 2017 saying that they were supposed to set up that VRV and they don't have it yet. VA is supposed to be notified by certified mail. If you have a red flag, they are not doing that. There's many FOIs on that, especially from my attorneys, and they are not responding to FOIs. And also, CBA has also had documentation where they have tried to FOI, they moved into litigation. And we currently have lawsuits on that. My case federally and in the city of Connor has been dismissed, but it's cost me $20,000 to get that dismissed. Veteran Affairs Police is also an issue. Seth Moulton had a Senate hearing showing 4,000 out of 5,000 VA police are dirty. And that's because of Obama's Second Chance Act. Nothing's been done. Mr. Alleva gave his wife and the al casa VA to bring his misinformation. He had his arms almost ripped off, it's on video, and nothing's been done. And he died before he got any justice. That is just absolutely astounding to me. Pregnancy care at Michael E. Davy, there's no maternal fetal medicine at Michael E. Davy right now. I had a wonderful charity call, Sega Force, that has stepped up, that if there are any female veterans that need to deliver their babies, they will deliver them. It's so sad that we don't have that, though. But Michael E. Davy has no labor delivery department. So, finally, they have a trans work and they do abortions now. So, that's horrible. We do have video evidence, my husband and I, we gave her her computer today to show you that we found 10 VA or daycare clinics that are shut down, they are out of business. But yet, on the community care website, they are shown available to veterans. They are not. We also know that the VA is working with Pediatrics Medical Group. And they have been providing the government since the 1990s. We have all that paperwork and information from our attorneys. In my case, we went all the way up to the Senate Committee with Senator John Tessa's office. Of course, they did nothing, except for one lady within his office. Ms. Tessa, she was on the phone with me up until 2:00 in the morning till I had, till I delivered her. I had to go to the ER to do it. WOPE versus WOPE should, that the VA is supposed to pay. 100% service connected or mess the bills. They do not. The VA is not. And I needed to have to turn off the omens to special. And I had 5% of expenses, 4 horrible things going on. And they sent me places that didn't exist. We have phone records at Tom Ball where they said they do not take try dress. They have a list of doctors that you've never heard of before. We tracked down those doctors. They're instructors. They only deliver babies. And they're at a law clinic, so it's ridiculous. And then on top of that, with the Pediatrics Medical Group, they don't treat try dress, but yet they're on the VA's community care webpage. And that's all that they were giving me. I was, I'm so lucky I left it because I was working with Fletcher. Fletch tried to work on my case, but instead, using my child and me and several of the veterans, I have videos that pass abortion to VA. That's not what we wanted. So, on top of that, we copied the questionnaire from that video. I hope you'll want that. VA also uses CPS to take their child because if you are sitting there and you think you need care, the hospitals here don't understand how VA works. So, what they do is they find the negligent of that, and then they use CPS to try to take away your child. And I've had to go through that. And it's just been a horrible thing. And then on top of that, the wait time scandal is back. We actually have FOIs, a few agencies have FOIs, the Humble Being Clinic, it's already falsified, it's got the ends to on wait times. And Michael E. Davy is scanning the FOIs and then checks right now. So, it's really, really a bad thing. So, Sarah, with all this information, I think the only solution would be to go.
Just a quick thing.
I would love to answer every single one of these questions right now. You and I did that offline conversation.
Yes, sir.
I know that my team's been in touch with you as well.
Yes, sir.
And as far as the PACT Act, the chairman of the Veterans Affairs Committee handed that directly to me.
It's Carter.
And G-RAT, I had never heard of that. G-RAT program, give me some rope here, was created so active-duty service members could help recruit individuals into the military and would receive payment for it. Fast forward, it turned out that it was not a legal binding effort. And without due process, those service members that recruited for the Army Reserve were given federally liable, and they have criminal records now. And they had no idea. So, we are on that one 100% too. For the shoot, that one's blowing up. That one's easy.
Thank you.
The OBGYN at Veterans Affairs Hospitals, I know that the effort of scaling is in the process. I wasn't aware that there was a transgender and abortion facility in the hospital. I'm gonna take a hard look at that. I actually cold called our clinic the other day, which I'll be cold calling the majority of VA hospitals in the States, just so I can find out things like that. Just, long pull the ten, I'm on this, okay? Half a minute, okay? I got this.
Thank you.
All right, you're up. Yes, ma'am. Uh, yes, sir. Wait a minute, you're gonna red flag VA because if you are, I got it. Okay, all right.
I do want to bring up something else that's happened that the VA can take up. Grab him, I got it. So, I had an injury that caused chest pain that I take pain medicine for. And when it gets bad, my doctor is asking to leave her in the surgery because I could be having a heart attack. And every time I've gone to Michael E. Davy, they're supposed to ask a questionnaire, "How have you felt about harming yourself?" "Think about hurting yourself?" All these questions. And I would answer them, "No." But the fact is, they're not answering with asking those questions and they're checking off boxes. They're checking "no," and they're falsified. Because I was told that if a veteran says yes, there's a lot of paperwork they gotta do. It takes a personnel off the floor to tell them to have to watch that veteran.
Okay, so you're saying while you were sitting with an individual in VA and they were asking questions, they wrote opposite of what you said?
No, no. After I left, I checked my VA records to make sure they're right, because sometimes I get it wrong. And the questionnaires in there, and they've checked "no" off on all the questions, but they never even asked any of the questions. They're penciled in. And most of us have friends that are veterans that might one day, we might one day even say yes to one of those. And if they're not asking, they're putting us at risk. And Penny Franklin, the chief of patient advocacy there, has told me, "Even if we ask Mr. Gunderson, a veteran still might go and park it on the lower head off." So, why should we ask him anyways? That was her answer. Supposedly, it's being investigated. Can I call the White House online in November? But I called today and there's still no answer. Still open, but no one's communicating about it.
Okay, um, I mean, you're gonna have to hand me what you're talking about so I can, I'll walk in to the VA clinic and have a conversation.
I get it.
I have it.
A couple of days ago, I walked into our VA clinic in Congo. They still require masks for the veterans to walk in there. I'm not gonna say that I lost my temper, but I did address the issue in a way that the secretary of VA called me the next morning. He said, "Our conversation and our morning briefing is all about you and your visit to the VA." The VA secretary's been very cordial with me. He's been very upfront. He has told me that he, I gave him, we agreed on a week he's gonna contact the President and the CDC to have mask bandages removed in the VA. More to follow on that. I don't know if it's a done deal yet, but I can promise you I'm gonna run that completely to the ground as I am with your, both of your issues, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, first of all. My concern is about our nation and its integrity and its obligations. I have found throughout this experience, and most of my whole life, I took for granted, you know, that we were the good guys, we were doing the right thing, and we were standing up for freedom around the world. And I was never a big fan of regime change wars, right? But I've noticed that there's truth coming from the strangest places now. You know, even people like maybe on the other side of where we are philosophically can speak out and say something that makes a lot of sense. And when I see Pulitzer Prize-winning journalists who reveal both the Mayan escrow and the Abu Ghraib prison scandal, say in excruciating detail that we blew up our ally's pipeline. And then I see this administration marching us inch by inch by inch into a possible nuclear confrontation. Calling for regime change when it's not Saddam Hussein, or Bashar al-Assad, or Muammar Gaddafi, Vladimir Putin. I don't like Vladimir Putin. I'm not a fan of Vladimir Putin or Zelensky or any of these guys. Like, going to the worst neighborhood in Chicago and being surprised by so much crime, right? But the problem is, this war in Ukraine would have been over in a week if we hadn't gotten involved. I feel absolute empathy for the Ukrainian people, but I am not willing to send my kids to go die in the fields of Ukraine or on the island of Taiwan.
Amen.
We are done with this, like, this is such this excursionary. I mean, I know you're in the military and I don't understand it like you would, right? You probably understand the threat environment and everything else a lot better than I would. But this is crazy. And to say that he's unhinged and he's that crazy, and then at the same time, we just keep pushing and pushing and pushing and pushing, like... I don't want to fight with Russia. I mean, if we have to have a fight with Russia, that's a different situation. But this is not being thrust on us. We are thrusting this on them. And I don't understand why. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Yes, sir. And I'm gonna give you warrior opinions, okay? And to your point, I have two sons. And my brothers and sisters in here that fought in our wars, never want to send our children to war, okay? I don't even tell my sons that I was in the SEALs. I hope to God they are engineers, welders, whatever, right? So, I'm on board with exactly what you're saying. War is the worst thing humanity can show us. And after fighting two for 20 years, I don't want anyone to see us another. And if you can preach, and since I got on the House Armed Services Committee, we're starting to get our briefs on Ukraine, in our classified briefs, and they're opening up. And I've had the opportunity to see exactly what, and I won't say behind the scenes, but what's developing in that theater of war with Ukraine and Russia. And, yes, sir, it could have been over in a few days. If we would have showed up and we would have given munitions and everything else we supplied Ukraine, chances are Russia would have moved over. I don't think the UN, or I don't think the UN could have stepped in in time to watch that. Now, I'm not giving too much credit for Russia because I think they have plenty of coverage.
But you see how if we actually had anything at all to do with that pipeline...
We can't afford to lose that ground. It's a strategic footprint. And if we lose Ukraine, if they lose...
What is that strategic ground? That's what I don't understand either.
Ukraine itself. That pushes Russia and its aggressiveness all the way into the west coast of the European nations, right? Nothing would stop, you know, from moving into Poland and taking all the way to the coast. They own the coastlines, they own the waterways, okay? If you have to, I'm not gonna say you have to know. I personally think that...
They're not a gentle ally, though.
What's that?
They're not our ally.
I understand what you're saying.
And listen, if we had anything to do with that pipeline, look, the pipeline is my main part of the question. Because not only is that an impeachable offense and all made of war without congressional approval, but if we had anything to do with that pipeline, that makes every single person in this room look absolutely horrible. That we would intentionally blow up the critical economic asset of our ally, Germany. We know it's not Russia. You could have just turned it off. Like, none of this makes any sense. And we're telling you guys in Congress to figure out, get to the bottom of what's going on. I mean, we don't know what's true, right? I mean, we don't know. I'm not making...
I'm trying to tell you everything that I know, and I always will. And I don't know, if I knew the American blew up that pipeline, I'd tell you, "Maybe that's our fault, and here we are."
We did.
I would. I've never been, I've never seen the facts.
What are we hiding?
I don't know. What are we hiding? What do you think we're hiding?
I don't know, but why are we there? We can't defend our border.
That's a very true statement, too. I agree with you 100%.
We're giving our money away.
And, yes.
Windows is stuck.
And what we're trying to do right now is break, is to corral the excess of spending, the support that we're showing Ukraine and hold it, and have the dollars accounted for, right? I've seen what Elon and Afghanistan and Iraq, I know exactly what's going on. We are, with this, our party is trying to corral that. But one thing, and hey, believe me, when I was, before I got up there, before they opened up the doors to me, I was like, "We're done. Over." And I know tactically what it looks like if Russia takes Ukraine. I do. And I would say anybody in here with tactical experience in a large land warfare would say, would probably agree with me.
And you're probably right about that. But my concern is if we're deindustrializing Europe and we have a...
If it was, to your point, if it was our fault, unless you came in, yes, sir, 100%. I have never heard that.
Putin's also a pretty smart guy. And why wouldn't he blow it up so we can have arguments like this?
Well, no, no, it's a healthy argument. It's a healthy discussion. Yes, absolutely.
Maybe that's the case, but this reporter details out the discussions, how there was an internal struggle within our federal agencies with a bunch of people saying, "Please, don't do this. If you do this and it comes back to us..."
To be fair, let me get into that, all right? Don't hang your hat on. Don't let ruin your day. I'm sorry, and just, I got you, you're next. And Taiwan, if China's posturing, right? That's obvious. What Russia's doing to Ukraine, China's watching. President Xi is watching how we act, how we react, okay? Taiwan falls to China, the light switch in America goes off. We are hyper-dependent on Taiwan. Every phone in your pocket, every car you're driving, every computer on your desk is one of technology out of Taiwan, okay? We have absolutely overextended ourselves with energy, tech, and medical. We have. We're there. Hence the reason Taiwan is such a precious asset for us, okay? I would hate to go to a land war with China.
Most countries in the ocean do.
And we don't... And we don't, we don't own undersea warfare right now, they do. And they own surface warfare too, right? But we're mean as hell, and we love to fight. And Russia knows that, China knows that. And they don't wanna go, they don't wanna go bang bang with us.
Yeah, but they see our guys weak right now, and they're all doing everything...
They do, but they know Texas is standing over here in the United States, so. I'm just saying. Did I, did I get to your question, point, to your point?
I got it, I definitely got one.
Okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, I'm gonna change the subject a little bit. My main concern is if we have, I don't know the exact number, I've heard anywhere from 200 above or less. But we have political prisoners in our country, have had since January 6th. And, uh, that's, personally, that's scary. Because if they do those people, if they can do what they did to Trump, hey, we're dead. And so, but in your position, I just, I'm asking you, when you get a chance, if you have an opportunity, try to address that situation. We have political prisoners, we have no reason to talk about China, or Russia, or any other country about them having political prisoners. We have political prisoners right here who have denied a due process of law, et cetera, et cetera. I could go on for another 20 minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I could, you're talking about the January 6th.
Yeah, yesterday, yeah.
Um, and we didn't get into that, I, I didn't get into that, and our, our neighbor over here, Congressman Troy Dammels, the sheriff, uh, has recently visited the jail. Uh, it's actually very challenging, even as a congressional member, getting in there and visiting. McCarthy released 44, 44,000 hours of video from January 6th recently, for everyone to come up, 44,000 hours in a matter of hours. Amazing, um, but, so the American people are gonna have the opportunity to see exactly how this started to play out, okay? The reason, one of the reasons, not all, but one of the reasons that they're still in where they are is DC actual. Remember back when we voted on, hey, you can't have everybody electing or voting? The DC justice system is so bogged down. Those individuals that were, that were arrested for January 6th are in that bottleneck. They're not specifically being... I, I, you know, I know you probably don't agree with me, and I wish I had facts that I can just say, this is the, this is the leadership that I'm talking to, just telling me this. And I know it's frustrating, I, I got it, I do, and...
Have you watched a lot of the videos that have been put out? They had a rally here.
I have DC police showing me videos that the American public haven't seen, okay? And let me tell you something, this is perfect. And I know that there were a lot of people up there, that were doing, they were exercising their right, their person being their right, yes, sir. But there were actually people up there that, in my opinion, if I would've been standing there, the way that the aggression was going, and if I had a weapon system, I would've used it. Tell you that right now, okay? Let me prove it on truth. A lot of what you see, you haven't seen. A lot of what you hear, you haven't heard. Now, one thing for certain is the media will spin. I don't know what, I don't know what media channels you watch, even if you watch them all, you're not getting the whole truth. And I can only give you a portion of the truth that I can find out, okay?
I, I've seen videos where you have unarmed citizens being either beaten or shot to death by watching the police.
I've seen videos where unarmed citizens were beaten and smashing DC police, with boards, with fences, with boots, trying to kill them, trying to kill them.
But that still doesn't change...
It doesn't change it, I'm not saying it went right or wrong.
And a lot of things that, that I, I wanna emphasize, I don't condone what all those people did. I wanna emphasize, my concern is, you're right. And we also, there's people playing the crowd, and as I covered it, I, I know that kind of stuff happens. But, uh, there's, there's, my concern is the fact that these people, I don't buy the argument that, that they're caught in a logjam or what have. If they're being denied their rights willfully, with intention, and, and that's just wrong.
This, and let me add this to you, because some people probably heard me say this before. The act itself...
Was a pervert.
Right? You say you're law enforcement.
We're tired.
It could, and I don't know this, but this, this is, this is more his perspective. It might, might not have been what they did, but what they saw. Because they broke into security areas, they broke into SKIFs, they broke into offices with secure information, national security information. I don't know how you feel about national security, but there's a reason that we don't, we have security levels. I mean, obviously, some people don't care about it, I do, okay? That could be very well some of the things, if you don't agree with the bottom line, okay?
We're final secrecy as long as there's trust. So all those people got to sit down, up in the SKIFs?
Not all of them, you know, I don't know the numbers on that, like, you heard me say, I don't know for certain. I'm trying to piece that together.
You appreciate the information.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to piece it together, hey, look, so, there are things that the, the, the vast, you know, the media should know, the American public shouldn't share, because it, it could jeopardize assets overseas. Make sense? Okay? And, and so, let's just be trying to put the puzzle together until we can actually get a Republican president back in there that says, alright, nothing, nothing, nothing.
I, I think the problem that I have with that whole situation is, is I've never heard anybody in the media or anybody anywhere else legitimately ask what these people were so angry about. It's almost like that doesn't, I mean, obviously, they acted out, right? And they should, the people who've been committed to trial should be punished, right? But there's obviously some kind of a problem for this sentiment.
People that were protesting for that group, have you ever been in a mob?
Nah.
No, I haven't.
Okay, alright, and I, and I, and I'll close with this, because I've lost my question. Okay, I've been in a mob, I've been on both sides of it, okay? Um, when the energy and the momentum, and I don't care who you are, if you're in it, you're on it, okay? And I would say the vast majority of them got caught in that excessive Poseidon wave, and they were bitter. Alright, unfortunate, across the border, sad, um, but it happened. It, it happened, okay?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, absolutely.
You said that you saw the film by the DC police, they showed you, they showed you what they wanted you to see. I have doubts that they showed you everything.
Um, that, you could, you could say that, the ones that were shown to me were, were veterans.
And why aren't they investigating their own people for killing unarmed citizens? I have heard of investigation...
I wasn't there, there was an investigation. I wasn't there when that shot took place. I know exactly where it took place. I, I walked across that very spot where she laid. And that was the outcome. That doorway goes directly into the floor where all the representatives were, were battened down. Those officers were begging those people, please do not cross this line. We have nowhere else to go, our backs are in a corner. If you're, sir, I would be, little bit, if your back is in that corner, and that mob's coming after you, and you're begging, now, of course, that last line of chairs, they do, what would you do?
I'd defend myself.
Yes, sir, you would.
But there's a difference between defending yourself and actively beating a woman just laying there. A big difference.
Okay, we're talking about two different people then.
What about the warning shot?
You're talking about the young lady that got shot?
No, there was one young lady that got, got murdered. Correct me if my memory is all, I'm hoping to go. There was one lady that got, got shot, killed, and then there's somebody else that got beat dead.
That was only one, there was only one, there was only one, two, two mates out of this, one missing. Ashley Fad, I think that was her name, and then an officer passed away, that, that was it.
No, that's not it. No, that's not it. We've seen the videos.
It's part of the 30,000 hours of video.
What's her name?
Ashley Fadd.
I don't, I don't remember the name of there, I've seen more than one video of a woman beaten to death by the... Just, and some of the people being held from, in the, in the DC prisons would never even enter the Capitol.
I have not heard about a second young lady being beat to death. Let, I'll, I'll look into it.
I'll send you videos.
Where'd you see the video?
Boy, a lot of places, I, I couldn't...
Social media?
Well, they, they had a rally in this very building about, what, two months ago? Over this very subject, and they showed a lot of videos there. So it wasn't solely beating them, they actually showed the, the film, the video. It was a very, very good educational rally that they had on Saturday.
I got that, yes. Nope. Be cautious, and I'm saying, don't, I'm just saying, be cautious about everything that you see online.
That's what I'm talking about.
I'm just speaking in generalities, yes, ma'am?
Congressman, first of all, I think you've been here to throw over our questions. Uh, and speaking of national security, I think, uh, one of the biggest questions that, or one of the biggest issues that we should be concerned about, given our geographic location, is border security. I know that is, uh, an issue that is very important to you too, uh, and something that you take near, near your heart, and something that you take a lot of personal interest in, have been down there locally. Can you give us an update of what's going on there, uh, and what we need to have the latest updates on?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that question. So I'll leave for the border again Friday morning. Uh, to update you on what, what we're doing as far as legislation goes, again, remember I told you we're applying pressure? We're bringing Mayorka over for, I would say, 99.9% sure, we're gonna, we're gonna impeach him. Uh, we're gonna hold him accountable for, for... Remember the challenge of that? Even though it comes out of the House, the Senate will not support that, and not even the President, okay? Uh, the, the Texas, the Republican, the Texans, Republicans of Texas, all 25 of us, have come together, as well as the southern border states, and we are applying as much, and I know this is gonna be a frustration, okay? But remember, congressional members can't convict, we can't snatch anybody, we're not law enforcement, we're legislators, okay? So the only thing that I have the opportunity to do is push legislation. Now, here's the frustrating part, we're trying to get the administration and the secretary just to apply legislation that it already ran in place. There is enough legislation laws in place to secure the border. Now, securing the border integrates two different things, I'm talking about securing the border, okay? Until, now, the Republican Party, our job is to get a, a Republican president elected. Okay, period, in a second. We get that, when we get a Republican president back in there, we can lock that border down.
But why is it dependent on that? Why isn't the law being written and passed enough?
We can't pass the law, the laws are in place. We don't own the Senate, the Democrats own the Senate.
And we already have the law.
The Democrats are telling them not to enforce it. Oh, hey, get your horse, why don't you sit down, I got you, check this out. I know, it kills me too, and I'm not sitting there watching it, and listening to everybody on the southern borders, and you ask yourselves, like, what is it? Why, I mean, because we, we sent them to DC, we sent them to DRC, and then we start to hear these grummers go over and start making moves, and start saying, why is that? But if you track the southern border from California to Arizona, to New Mexico, Texas, all the way to Florida, that's Republican voters. What does he care about securing the border if those areas don't vote for it? Does that make sense? That's, that's, yeah, that's how frustrating, we have to have a Republican president in place in order to enforce the laws. Even if we, I mean, Kevin McCarthy said, he's like, Mayorka's gonna have a parking spot at the House to be test, to testify every single day. But it's just the pressure that we can apply, it does not make them enforce the laws.
Well, I hope that Republican president can change the system so that we can count on the laws that we already have passed.
Amen to that, I agree, I understand. Go ahead, sir, and I'll come over to you, miss. Yeah.
I'd like to tack on this to my original question, I think it's probably those nice things we're driving for racing today.
I don't know them, by the way.
You're making it sound bad.
I'd just like to kind of follow up on some of your comments, if you could talk a little bit more about how Ukraine is of strategic importance to America, and a couple points in that debate is, right now, we have Viktor Yanukovych actively supporting strikes within Crimea and wanting for heavier weapons in, uh, the entire region, possibly including firebaths, these are crossing red lines for Russia. Western Europe is already looking to America for energy, uh, security, and after this, that's a strategic win for us, that is already been accomplished. Western Ukraine is already under Ukrainian control. The only thing under Russian control are highly contested areas in Crimea and eastern Ukraine. Those are not of strategic importance to America. Why are we not at a juncture today where we can start pushing for a negotiated settlement?
Zelensky will never go for a negotiated settlement.
He will, if America presses it.
Zelensky wouldn't be there if it wasn't for us. He isn't in there.
But, and that point's all day long, I mean, it's just fact 101, like, that, but you have to appreciate Putin and who he is, and what he's doing, what he's already done. You think he's gonna stop in the East? I, I, my, my, my theory was he was gonna push far west as he could, and then go back to the, to the areas that politically, that supported him politically. That's what I always thought.
I don't think he's gonna go all the way to the West, because he doesn't want to govern, he's gonna have a ministry.
He can't now, because we stepped in, and the other guys have stepped in.
If he's saying, if we give them overrated weapons, he's gonna have to push further, why would we, why would we do that?
Once Russia starts ramping up, when they start moving, because now he's recruiting everybody, right? He has endless reserves of individuals. We are not committing our bodies. The only thing that we have in, but, hey, look, I'm, I'm with you, I, I, of course, we're on you too, because we're, we're, we are $30 trillion in debt, I get you, I was getting you, so...
I guess I would just like to, like, specifically answer the point that, when do you think is the proper juncture to see a negotiated settlement?
Oh, sir, I mean, if I do that, I reckon I've been over three months. And, and that, don't let that frustrate you, it's just, hey, warfare is, 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 you can, there are too many nuances. And since we don't have boots on the ground, we can't get kicked one way or another. We can tell Zelensky all day long, we can clap our hands, we can yank, we can yank all of our support out there, that may not change anything, yet, mine? You don't know that, you just don't know that.
Why are we not trying?
Why do you, what?
We are not trying to...
Yeah, but why do you think we're not trying? See, he has, he has access, all, he has that access, you have access, and we know that. There are all sorts of reasons and what have, if you're real news, you're gonna be learning a lot. And me personally, I already trust you explicitly, 100%.
I do too.
Because you're ex-military, and I'm ex-military, I know you know what's, what's going on. I just wanna make sure you have my unda, you know, you have my...
I appreciate it, and I, and I'm spilling my guts to you.
I know, man.
I'm letting you, letting you know everything that I know. And, and I get you, to, to all of your points, I understand, I, it, it breaks my heart that we're having to spend all this money now, and we're seeing the tanks over there. You know how reliable a tank is if you don't have mechanical parts? About from here to the door?
The US has a range of 86,000 models, right? That's the problem, so we've got a worker, man, are we all gonna...
Well, you know, I hate to scare you off this one, but most, most dudes goes from over the North Pole. We have, they have hypersonics. That goes around the South Pole. In the North Pole, the United States has defensive postures at the North Pole in order to prevent a nuclear rocket from going over the North Pole and hitting us. We don't have one in the South Pole. And Russia and China have hypersonic capability to send that rocket right around the pole. That's another reason why we are so aggressive on this. I mean, is Putin, is Putin the guy in the push button? I think so.
I don't approve of Putin.
Yes, he is.
And so, I think you, they would be like, hey, if, if we back into the corner, I think you can say, hey, promote Russia and hit you, and then whatever they have understeep.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go to the South Pole.
We're really, I'm having a great time, I appreciate it. Okay, here we go, alright, but, I mean, I definitely don't make sense, this is one of those tactical questions that... Have you been to Ukraine? You don't ever wanna see, have you, are you a veteran? Have you, have you ever seen the dead bodies, dead baby? Okay, have you seen a bunch of them? I hate that we're Big Brother, but we are. And we bring something to the table no other country on the planet brings. Right? And, and you heard me say, I, I would want my sons to go fight war.
It's fair, but we can't let emotion get in the way of...
Hey, ma'am, the government, how emotion is absolutely the wrong thing to do.
Yeah, that's what we worry about, Biden's too invested in this emotional way, you can see that just with the way that he interacts.
I wouldn't put stopping anything like this, like, we're all thinking that's the way we can do this.
Jury's program. With all the trillions that the government is spending, you talk about the infrastructure and other local spending.
My question to you, sir, is, are there any plans to bring any of that victim home to Texas A&amp;P for what? Oh, yeah, yes, sir, absolutely, uh, community projects, it's what you're referring to. Can't wait. I have spoken to everyone of my commissioners at District 8, as well as the, okay, you gotta get a little brace on Harris County. Can't wait. I have spoken to everyone, my commissioners at District 18, as well as the, okay, you gotta give a little grace on Harris County. They won't talk to you. I don't know where's the path. We've reached out. Because, because that funding is coming out, I mean, you've got commissioners sitting right over your right shoulder. And I promised them, hey, give me the numbers, I'm gonna go get, best I can. Well, I'm fighting against 38 other Texans. But the answer to your question is yes. Yes, sir, absolutely. Only if we want it. Like Polk County, they're like, we don't want it. I don't even wanna see a government official in Polk County. That's what they're telling me. I'm like, well, okay, but if you need help over here. Like the reservation, the Alabama Chavas, they need broadband. So I'm gonna go get some funding for them for broadband. That's my job. Yes, sir. Next question. Yes, sir.
We're almost done, sir. Hang with me.
Morgan.
Politics is boring. I know. I'm trying to make everything.
Welcome to Willis, Morgan.
Oh, yeah, good to be back.
Anyway, I have a question. What is the federal government doing about the federal situation?
So we had a briefing with Hyatt yesterday. That is the law enforcement agencies that, it's a collection of law enforcement agencies around the nation that are fighting the high intensity drugs, i.e. fentanyl, opioids, heroin, which is a form of opioids, and methamphetamines. It's a free for all right now with fentanyl. It is absolutely out of control and make no mistake about it, after the briefing got yesterday, it lived right here in Montgomery County. That goes along the lines with how we handle China because the, the ingredients are coming from China to the cartels. Cartels are pushing across. It's even more so a problem now because they have American citizens that are driving over the border, picking it up and bringing it back. So it's not coyotes and illegal immigrants smuggling now. It's actually Americans that are helping out. The meth labs, so here's, just for your own education. Two milligrams of, of fentanyl will kill them. Two milligrams. A half a grain, imagine salt grain in your mind, a half of that of carfentil will kill you. We're finding more and more pill presses in the United States because you can, anybody in this room right now can get online and order fentanyl from China. And they'll mail it to your house. And because the law is in place in America that the government can't check private citizens' mail, it'll show up. So there's multiple fronts that we're trying to fight this fentanyl problem on. The border is a primary one. Make no mistake about it. How do we solve that problem? I asked the individuals that I met with yesterday, okay, hey, can we look the other direction and beat that freight train head on? So fentanyl's here, problem's here, it's out of control. Is there anything we can do this direction? What, what does that look like? Increase our North Neptunian or Narcan. Is that something we've, I, I, I don't have, we don't have an answer to that question yet. And it's one of those problems that, is it solvable? No. Is it, can we restrict it? Probably. But the, the death rate, the highest, you know, there's most probably 18 to 45 is the death rate. The youngest child that died in Montgomery County was 13. And it's just because they thought they were taking something else. And it's here. Okay, it's, it's here. So talk to your babies.
Where's Narcan made? China?
Where's, where's Narcan made? Probably China. Every part of the school made over there. I don't know what you get at Walgreens to carry so many drugs. 60 bucks. More to follow on that, sir, when we walk up to you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
I listened to these two men talk about how they trust you. And I want to trust you. I respect you. I respect what you've done in service. But when people in this audience have told you that they saw videos online and you scoff and tell us to be careful about what we've seen and yet you blindly believe what you're being told in Washington, it makes it hard to trust.
Now, it's not, it's not blindly believing. It's understanding how manipulative social media and the media are.
And the government's not.
I, I got it. I, I don't have a solution for you on this one. I, I, I stand here in the middle in front of my hometown trying to give you the best perspective I can. What I do know for a fact is social media will twist it. It will. They, and, and, in a way that it, it, it's, it's infectious. And I've seen it. First hand happened to me.
But Morgan, you're all we have, man.
I got you, girl. I swear. I know. I'm here for you. And when I get the answers, I'm gonna come, I, I swear I'm gonna come back and tell you, hey, look. But young man, the only thing that I know, and if you hate the government, you hate DC police because they're their enemies, I get it. But I'm up there with them. I'm up there, I'm up there talking with, and these DC police are veterans. Some of them are the ones that got stalked. And they, they understand. They're not vindictive. They're not angry. They're like, hey, we get it. This was just what happened. Okay, so I have to take what they say, and I have to take what he says, and I have to take what you say, and I have to explain to you the best that I can. And I didn't scoff. Okay? It's frustrating for me because I, I'm trying to be as honest as I can, and honesty means social media's gonna lie to you. The internet is gonna twist it. The government is gonna lie to you. And it's me in the middle saying, this is the truth. The three truths that live in this space, and the one that I'm giving is the best that I can. And, and I understand if you don't trust me, I would never trust a politician either.
I would. You wanna add one, this is one thing that makes it even harder. And I'm not a lawyer. I worked for lawyers. When we were subjected to what was a dog and pony show put on television with all the witnesses about January 6th, and there was no cross-examination, and we were just fed what they wanted us to hear. You've got to know, we can't believe anybody.
Right, yes. True, true, true. Thank you.
I literally.
That was a, that was a political show.
And COVID. After COVID, we don't trust anything.
This is, okay, so this is one of the first lessons I learned in DC. There was a few. The learning curve is very vertical up there. But one of the most important lessons I learned is that Washington DC is very theatrical. And it is a show. And when you see members on the House floor, if you see them on C-SPAN, you see the committees, and they're just armed, storming and smacking and ra, rallying in their base, irritating the hell out of us, and the second they walk out that door right there, it's done. It, it's, it's amazing. It is. I'll get your last question anyway. It's my job to come here and tell you what I saw through these lenses. I mean, I could do anything. If I could take my eyes out of my head and stick them in your head, take my ears off and stick them on your head, take my heart out of my chest and stick them in your chest, say, now you know, now you hear what I hear, now you see what I see, and now you feel what I feel, and I'm not lying to you. And whether or not you trust me or not, I'll give you everything I got. And I appreciate that you respect me. I'm gonna do my best for the next two years to earn your trust. And then when it comes down to election, if I didn't do that, there's probably a young man sitting right beside me that would run against me. Yes, ma'am.
I can talk about, okay. So you mentioned the fentanyl, we were talking about fentanyl, and protecting our babies. I wanna know what your take is on cybersecurity and social media because our youngsters, that's how they're being targeted. These criminals and drug dealers are posting emojis and all this crazy stuff. How, do you feel sad? We have a pill for that. Do you feel tired? Can you not sleep? We have a pill for that. These kids are thinking they're taking stuff to mask whatever's going on, and then they get accidentally drugged and they die. So what, what else can we do from a cybersecurity standpoint, from a social media standpoint, to help protect our kids?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. So on two cyber subcommittees, which I fought to get on, because cyber, cyber risk, cyber threat, cyber warfare is where we're at. No more balls playing guns, push of a button, they got us. Social media, it's cyber warfare. So here's the challenge. A, a large group of individuals in here probably aren't as social media savvy as my five-year-old. I'm not socially, I'm not socially savvy as my nine-year-old, and I don't even let go of social media. They get it from school. I've been doing my due diligence with my staff, my younger staff, to say, what is the fix? The federal government, when you, you can appreciate the advancements in technology and how fast that wind blows. By the time the federal government puts a mandate out, technology is so far advanced, it does not matter. We are pushing on the subcommittees to have private industry help protect the American public. Now, I always say this, when it comes to our babies, the first line of defense is mommy and daddy. Okay? Period. I can't protect you, the federal government can't protect you like you can. And they can't protect your babies like you can. Now, they spend more time with their friends, and it doesn't help if, like, my, my son's, my son doesn't have a phone. He never will until he buys one. But every one of his buddies do. Okay? We're there. I've already had, my son's nine, I've already had to have that, that sex talk with him, right? And he got it off social media. Right? Something that we didn't experience when we were being born in the 1900s. Okay? So as we do our best up there, because I don't care how much money you pump into it, it's not, it's not, it's not gonna matter. It's individual, and I, and I'm speaking as a dad. It's individual responsibility. Taking care of it in the house, okay? Having our, our school board and our teachers do what they can as well. But I don't just hand my babies off to the school. They get home, they're getting educated all over again. That's the best way I can answer that question. With the cyber piece, same thing. We're, we're trying to move this in, I mean, the countries that are, the nefarious hackers around the world are so technologically advanced. They're spending hundreds of billions of dollars on quantum artificial intelligence, machine learning. These algorithms, it, it creates superhuman, super soldiers, right? And we, we don't have, and we don't do that here. And they do that everywhere else. It's a challenge. And I don't have a perfect answer for you. But I'll continue to update you. Okay, yes, ma'am. Last one. I got you. Wait, you got, yeah, last one. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what she was talking about, given what you said about cybersecurity, seems like the remedy is parents need to know what their kids are doing.
Okay, and don't give a nine-year-old a phone, you know, whatever, but that may not fix everything. But if we, if we knew what our kids were doing, where is parental responsibility? Come on. Okay, but what I really wanna say is, I think Mexico is our biggest enemy. Why can't we, why aren't we, what can be done to put pressure on government officials in Mexico to where we would not have a border problem? Not a border problem that we are having now. Yes, there would be a few tripling always.
We, we actually had this, we had a very good discussion with my team. I know they're back there, they're here, they're painted on this, but here's the, here's the, here's the problem. The cartels own Mexico. We're not mad at Mexico. We're mad at the cartels. The cartels pay off all the elected officials. The cartels own the border. The cartels move the drugs. They have the money. They have the ability to threaten and kill within peace. And because of that, no negotiations that we have with the government unless we actually say, all right, enough's enough, JDM. All day. Right? Probably gonna get told for saying that. You wanna get rid of these problems, send the JDM right on top of their house. That's how serious we are. President Trump would probably do that. And yes, ma'am, I understand your frustrations. And I'm sure somebody in here knows somebody who died from fentanyl overdose. I mean, there's too many of us in here to know. Okay? But that's the problem with dealing with Mexico. And, and it's, there's 120 countries represented that come across that border, not just Mexico. Matter of fact, it's the lower number, uh, uh, Mex, Mex, Mexicans than it is everywhere else down south.
Including Chinese.
Including, oh, yeah, Chinese.
You're coming through their country.
Well, so, and I don't know if you did this or not, but 50,000 people came across the northern border this year. What are you referring to? Okay.
We're done.
All right, man, go ahead.
Hey, you're back to me.
I'm sorry. I did. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. I saved you. I apologize.
Okay, hit her and then, then one more, then we got you.
Go ahead, miss.
Um, I wanted to ask, and then we have a lot of police officers, a lot of teachers, a lot of veterans. And is anybody in here affected by WEP and GPO and their retirement?
You talking about the windfall?
Yes.
I, I'm all over that. Catch me off.
Do you co-sponsor?
I took it for granted. I, I've been, I've been going after that one since I was a candidate.
Well, there's a bill on the floor now that's been reintroduced, HR 82, that just repeals those two things. So if you could co-sponsor it.
Yes, ma'am. No, I'm, I'm a lot of support, I, that very cause.
Okay, thank you.
I have since day one of my candidacy. Yes, sir.
Morgan, I appreciate you coming down and updating us. You went up there to SLAM, and you ain't been there in six, six weeks, and I know you already tackled it. What I like though, what we can do here, you, what we can do in your, in your District 18 that, that's gonna help you out.
BBO. Just like, just like, and I don't mean that physically, please.
Yeah, I gotta say that if you call me back, you know, I've never had a conference to call you back before, so thank you.
I try to call every single person back again. And what I need from all of you is to share what I've spoken about tonight, good, bad, or different. Okay, if I make you mad, I apologize. Not that, I'm just, I'm speaking for more, and I'm speaking for my, for what I've learned. You gotta hold me accountable. And every time that I have one of these, you gotta come, and you gotta tell me what's going on. 770,000 people are growing. If I tried to talk to each one of you for one minute, it'd take you four years. But as a group, and I have to answer, because a lot of people probably have the same questions. And if I can answer it, it puts everybody in a comfort zone, or the way that I answer it, as a, as a group, we're like, we don't, that's not what we agree with, I, that, that educates me. I call home, when I'm in Washington DC, if a bill comes across that floor and I'm up for member, I call home. We had a bill come across for, uh, that affected our district attorneys. I called our district attorney, and he's like, I don't like it. I was like, Roger that. Called WEP team, was like, we don't like it. They pulled it off the floor. Okay? I, I, that's what I'm doing for you. Every single day that you're out there. I gotta get away from here. That's what I'm doing. Fighting for you. So keep, keep coming to these. Hold, hold me accountable. Keep me honest. Educate me on what you're, what you're concerned about so I know. Remember, I have, I have lanes I have to stay in, and I focus on house armed services, VA, and border. If you have other problems, I, I'll take those on board too. And I'm gonna bring a lot of people, a lot of people to help me. Okay? It is not a one-man show up there. And I'll leave you with this, before I want, I wanna bring my team up here. The best advice I've ever gotten, Washington DC, Texas member called Bill, and he's like, Morgan, I take something. I want you to listen to me. He's been out there for like 30,000 years. He's like, Morgan, listen to me. Look at me when I'm telling you this. He's like, never, ever trust anybody out here. Don't trust Democrats, don't trust the Republicans, don't trust your staff, do not trust me. He goes, Morgan, I promise you this, I will never, ever stab you in the back, but I'll damn sure shoot you in the chest if it's between my district and yours. I was like, I got you. I don't check what that means. And I'm moving forward accountable, just like that. Every day. I'll introduce my team. Have my team come up here. This is who works for you. This is your entire District 18, DC to District. I'm not gonna do too, too long of introduction, but this is it. Take a good look, chat them up. They're amazing, they're amazing people. We've got a bunch of Aggies, a bunch of Bearcats. Two long horns, you got, you got Oregon, Denver, here in Georgia. Okay, and so God bless you. I'm gonna pass Mr. Walker, would like to say something.
I'll be real quick. I just wanna say something. I've known Morgan since he was a young man. And I don't think you'll find anybody, and this is just me as a low country boy from Willis, Texas, as he said. That's all I know. I don't consider myself a politician. I'm a county commissioner, but that boy right there is somebody that you can put your back to if he goes to Washington, Morgan. I promise you, he's never gonna tell you to lie. He'll always tell you to prove, and he'll fight to the end for y'all. I promise you.